Good evening and welcome to the special presentations. Today is February 5th, 2019, and our first order of business will be the Business Spotlight for Amaya Group Real Estate. Located at 27-150 Eucalyptus Avenue, Amaya Group Real Estate is sure to have an agent to meet your needs. Owner Stephen Amaya is a longtime resident of Moreno Valley with over nineteen years of experience in real estate. His goal for Amaya Group Real Estate has always been about the client's experience first. Stephen has also focused on building a team-based culture at Amaya Group. There are several, there are a small group with big results. In 2018, they sold 248 homes. While eighty percent of those were right here in Moreno Valley. Stephen has also taken great pride in supporting a community he not only loves but lives and works in. Today, we recognize Amaya Group Real Estate with a Business Spotlight video. Please roll the video.
At Amaya Group, we believe in the client experience, and with our incredible sales team, we'll be sure to help you with all your real estate needs. Boasting more than 240 homes sold in 2018, we're number two in the inland empire with eighty percent of those sales right here in Moreno Valley. And with a strong social media presence, it's easy to see that we're ahead of the curve. Because at Amaya Group, who you work with matters.
If I can have Mr. Amaya, please come forward. Bring all your team. Mr. Amaya, would you like to say a few words?
Sure, was not prepared for this. We actually do have girls on our team, it's not a bunch of guys, first of all. But no, we're super proud to receive this today. Thank you so much to the mayor, to the mayor for electing us. And any way we can give back to the city of Moreno Valley, we're happy to do that. So, I really just want to thank all of our clients and residents for all the support we've had throughout the years. So, thank you very much.
Well, it's our pleasure, and we want to thank you on behalf of the City Council and the city of Moreno Valley for doing business here in Moreno Valley. We have a certificate for you, and we also have a USB with the video on it where you could put on Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, your website.
Thank you.
Okay? So, want to take some pictures and then you can say thank you to the...
For you in the middle.
Okay.
We need one girl at least to...
Okay, so let's give the Amaya Group another round of applause. Our second presentation is recognition of the classified employee of the third quarter, and we'll have Councilmember Thornton present a certificate of recognition to Jenda Webster.
Good evening. On behalf of the City Council of Moreno Valley, I'd like to extend an invitation to Jenda Webster to please join me in front and center as well as Acting Chief of Police, Lilliver. Jenda Webster is employed as the Senior Acting Assistant and was named as Moreno Valley Police Department Classified Employee the third quarter of 2018. Jenda was assigned to the Moreno Valley Station on May 12th, 2016, as an accounting assistant too, and was promoted to her current position, Senior Accounting Assistant, on June 21st, 2018. Jenda has gone well above and beyond what is required of her and other employees at the station. In her short tenure, Jenda has proven to be efficient, hardworking, and has an innate ability to manage multiple assignments, and her superb attention to detail has proven to be her greatest strength and asset in her work. And so, we would like to present you with this certificate. Jenda, you are an important part of Moreno Valley Police Department. The City Council is extremely grateful for your dedication. Congratulations on being employee of the third quarter 2018.
Thank you very much. I'd like to thank the city of Moreno Valley and Riverside Sheriff's Department for this award. I'm very proud to receive this award, very honored. I'd also like to thank my lieutenant here, Lilliver, for all his support, and my supervisor, Dana Leggett, and my coworkers. I work with a great bunch of people, and I just, I love my job, I love coming to work every day, and just thank you very much.
Congratulations, Jenda Webster, let's give her another round of applause. The following presentation is recognition of two members of the Family is All That Matters Organization. Councilmember Cabrera will present certificates of recognition to Kwaris Brown and Tyrus Aubrey.
We can do better than that. Okay, so tonight, we are recognizing two young men that are here, and every time I see a story, or hear about a story, or see especially our youth persevere and come through struggles and succeed, I mean, we love seeing that, all of us love those stories of heroes, and it inspires us, it motivates us as well, it gives us that, that energy and that drive to keep doing what we're doing and to help others as well. And so, tonight, we are recognizing Karis Brown and Tyrus Aubrey for their hard work and dedication. They are the first two members of the Family is All That Matters Organization to make it all the way through the youth football program. Karis and Tyrus have been members of the organization for eight years, and in that time, they have been able to maintain a great GPA while completing the football program. I tried out for basketball like three times and never made it, so I have to give them props. In honor of the hard work and dedication that these young men have demonstrated, we would like to present them with these certificates of recognition. The first one is for Karis Brown. And the second is for Tyrus Aubrey. Would you guys like to say a few words, or anyone share a couple words? Yeah?
Good evening, everybody. The Family is All That Matters Group is a tutoring and mentoring program, 501(c)(3) nonprofit chartered for tutoring, mentoring, and physical fitness. The physical fitness aspect of our program is the athletics program. So, these young men started with us at five years old, they're going to high school next year, and they have maintained a GPA of 3.0 or higher. So, in that recognition, we would also like to extend to them a commemorative football with our organization logo on it, and their accomplishment throughout the years. And Karis, the same thing. Like to present that to you as well. Excuse me, I have a couple of more gifts. We come bearing gifts this evening. And also, for their academic achievements, we have gotten them a commemorative plaque, statue, so that they can remember what it is to be student athletes, right? And one last thing before we get out of here. Our City Council members, newly re-elected. Sitting seat, sitting seat, Mayor newly elected, and our newly elected Carla Thornton. We would like to present you guys, also, the City of Moreno Valley City Council 2019 for your recognition of our youth, for the families that we service within our organization. Ulysses. Actually, Victoria, get in the middle of these two here, right here, yes.
Yeah, there we go. There we go, alright. There we go, wonderful, alright. Big smiles from everyone. A little bit further back, a little bit wider. Congratulations. And Karis?
Karis, congratulations.
Congratulations. I'm sorry, I missed.
Congratulations. Hey, thanks for coming, okay? Really appreciate it.
Pleasure to see you, yes sir.
Good to see you, man. Good.
He's a mess, brother, sorry to miss you. He wants to talk to you about a virtual reality transition.
Excellent. Thank you so much Fiat and Karis Brown and Tyrus Aubrey, congratulations. Let's give them another round of applause. The final presentation is recognition of the Community Day of Service sponsors, and Mayor Gutierrez will present the certificates of recognition to Lily Quiroa and Barbara Jimenez of Waste Management, Rachel Singer of Western Riverside Council of Governments, Roxanne Roundtree of Eastern Municipal Water District, Adam Hall of Adam Hall's Plant Nursery.
So, if we can have them come up here as well, Waste Management, Adams Hall, Western Riverside Council Governments, Eastern Municipal Water District, and Rightway Site Services. You know, the Community Day of Service was an event that we had, I believe, September 29th last year, and it basically was an event that we had throughout the community, mostly in District 3 and also in District 4, where the residents gave back in cleaning up the city and beautifying the city. But if it wasn't for these sponsors for their financial contributions, we wouldn't be able to have held the event. So, on behalf of my office, the City Council, and the city staff, we really want to thank you so much because we used all of the water, we used all of the goodies, everything that we needed for the volunteers to have a successful event. So, I want to say thank you, thank you. We do have, oh, let's give them a round of applause. For Waste Management, again, the certificate is awarded in recognition for your efforts to ensure the vitality of the community. Let's give Waste Management a round of applause. And this one is also for Adam Hall's Plant Nursery for their contribution and several years of being a member of our community as a business here in Moreno Valley as well. We also want to recognize the Western Riverside Council of Governments for their regional support as well. And we also want to recognize the Eastern Municipal Water District, and we do have a Director of the Board, Dave, did you want to come up?
Yeah.
What's he doing, sitting there? So, we have this certificate as well. So, again, let's give them one big round of applause for all of their support in making it such a successful event.
Hey, Dave?
How are you? How are you? Hey, Dave? 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 the cost of electricity on top of that. You know, simply said, there's two issues, NOx, the emissions from burning of fossil fuel. The largest NOx contributor is the heavy-duty and medium-duty trucks we see out here on the freeways. Cummings makes an engine that is near zero, heavy-duty natural gas engine that's 90% reduction in NOx. Problem solved. Greenhouse gases, again, what that is, is releasing natural gas to the atmosphere. It traps natural gas and part of climate change. Well, the larger just GHG contributor is dairies, livestock, landfills, and wastewater treatment plants. Renewable natural gas, let's capture that gas and put it in the pipeline. Again, it comes out to a carbon-neutral formula. If we just use 16% of the gas we deliver to our customers came from that renewable source, it would have the same effect as greenhouse gas emissions as electrifying all California at a much lower cost. This is a realistic goal to achieve by 2030. With the balance approached, we can achieve clean air goals, preserve choice, and minimize disruption and cost.
Thank you, Robert. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Next two speakers is Jessica Munoz, followed by Rafael Burguerras. Good evening, Jessica.
Good evening. My name is Jessica Munoz, and I am the Riverside County Executive Director of Voices for Children. And I am truly here this evening only to say thank you to the City of Moreno Valley for the support that we've received from you through the CDBG program and some assistance raising awareness last May, and to give you an update about what you have helped us accomplish. Voices for Children is the court-appointed special advocate or CASA program for Riverside County. That means that it is our unique responsibility and privilege to work alongside the Juvenile Court, to train and support wonderful volunteers who are assigned by Juvenile Court judges to advocate for children in foster care in the court, in school, and the community. As you well know, children in foster care are boys and girls who've been abused and neglected, sometimes unimaginably so. And their welfare is managed by caring but often overburdened professionals, including social workers, attorneys, and the judges that hear their cases. Sometimes people are surprised to learn that when a child enters the foster care system, their case is actually assigned to a judge who's charged with making life-altering decisions at every phase of the child's case. And that's where our tremendously inspiring CASA volunteers step in. So our volunteers advocate for only one child or one sibling group at a time. And they do it because they have a pure interest in making sure that the child's best interest stays the focal point of the case. From our point of view, this is a win-win proposition, because for the child, the CASA volunteer for many of them becomes the only caring, consistent adult presence in their lives. They have an opportunity to spend time with the child in much more natural environments than many of the other professionals do, like over ice cream, and as a result, get tremendous insight into the child's unique needs and circumstances. On the flip side, our CASAs are uniquely positioned to advocate for the child's needs in court through their report and attending hearings, and in doing so, provide much more information to the judges to make those decisions than they would otherwise have. I'm really excited to share with you that in this, our fourth year in Riverside County, we expect to serve over 400 children countywide, and 20 of the children we've served so far are here in Moreno Valley. Nearly half of those children, we've served with funding from the Moreno Valley CDBG program. So we're so grateful to this city, not only for the funding, but for the other ways that we've been able to communicate our need for volunteers and truly count you as one of our success partners. So I wanted to thank you very, very much for all of your success. And while that is the reason for being here, I'd be remiss if I didn't say that we always need more volunteers. So if anyone is interested in getting to know us better, then I hope they'll visit our website at speakupnow.org. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Jessica. It really is a great organization. Thank you. Next speaker is Rafael Burguerras.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, staff, residents, and our guests. I want to touch on what the pastor said, when we commit ourselves to works. First, we do it unto the law for those that are believers. I do it also to the law and to the city of Moreno Valley by being part of the committee that I'm on. The parks, the committee service, and the TRS Committee, we do a heck of a job to bring entertainment and activities to the city of Moreno Valley. With Patty Solano as our director, we do a great job with the staff. We look at things that need to be talked about, okay? And again, a reminder to the city of Moreno Valley, when you get your booklets every quarter, the soaring, please do not throw it away. Look at it. It has gotten better with a lot of great things to do for all ages, all ages. In this city, we have something for you to do. So I have three things that I want to talk about to the city of Moreno Valley and to those that like running. We're going to have our first Race on the Base at March Field Base. So it's an activity that you sign up, you pay a fee, but you'll be able to run for a course. And that's March 9th. That's the first one that's coming up next month. Then we have the famous, the Eggs in April. So you have all the little kids that can go to Sunbury Park in April, okay? April 13th, if arranged, it'll be on the 20th. We do have activities. These are quarterly activities. I just mentioned March. I mentioned April. And I'm going to leave the last one because people talk about it. The staff has added four more hikes, a total of eight this year. We're going to have eight hikes. There was one last month that I didn't make it. There's one in February 2030 at 7:30 in the morning at Hidden Springs. For those that like to hike, you can be at the school, the elementary school there. And there's another one on March 30th and April 27th. These are quarterly things that you can do in the city of Moreno Valley with your neighbors. For those who never met someone else that lives in the city, it's very important to know your neighbors. Bring them. Get to know them. Because together, we can keep the city safe and clean. That's what we do in our committees. We do the best for you and the residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Rafael. Next speaker is Adolf Kruger. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Adolf Kruger. I've lived in the city. And next month be 47 years. It's been the most, all 47 years, the most, the people here are the most maliciously evil people anywhere. And you won't believe me, I've been through it. And I don't know how evil anybody can be like this, okay? And it's the corruption in the city. It's not just, okay, council, police, all about the worst ones anywhere. And they've destroyed my home now, okay? I mean, just about literally destroyed. And all I can say is, okay, this city is, this city is sick. And I mean, in the head. And okay, that's all I have to say now, this. I can't say that I feel sorry for any of you. In God we trust, you'll find that out someday. What you have done, okay? You will reap what you have sown, each and every one of you. And most of you don't believe me, but you know what's going on. Whole city is sick. Especially the police and the council and everything.
All right, Madam Clerk, any more speakers?
None.
Okay. We are now going to move on to our joint consent calendar, Sections A through D on the agenda. All items listed on the consent calendar, Sections A, B, C, and D are considered to be routine and non-controversial and may be enacted by one motion unless a member of the City Council would like either further discussion or as a separate vote. So we'll go ahead and take any requests for separate or just discussion? Okay, C4, first question, okay? Okay, that is the exclusive negotiation agreement by and between the Moreno Valley Housing Authority and Rancho Balago developers. Councilmember Marquez?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Marshall, can you kind of explain this negotiating agreement and what we're, why it's on the agenda and what the council needs to do with this? Can you kind of brief, brief us on this?
Yes, sir. Mayor, Mayor Protem, councilmembers, with this item, the city has an approximately eight-acre parcel at the corner of Cottonwood and Indian. We've been working with affordable housing developers to kind of look at the options in the future. We do have one developer that stepped forward, has an opportunity to potentially develop this. What the exclusive negotiation agreement does at this point is, really commits the city to working with him so he can conduct his due diligence. Then if he deems he's able to move forward with the development of the parcel, we then bring back an affordable housing agreement and development agreement to the City Council for their discretion and review. So tonight, what we're not committing is any funding or any sale of the parcel or any development at this point. We're just entering into the agreement so that he can do his due diligence and assess what development can be built there.
That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. All right, seeing there's no other further questions, we'll go to public comments. Madam Clerk, any speakers?
Yes, Rafael Burguerras.
Okay, Rafael?
Good evening again, Mayor, staff, council, staff, and residents and guests. I wrote down C4 myself, and I'm glad that Marshall got an opportunity to address it. And I'm glad that, again, we're not bound to any agreement. But I did like about C4 was, if it does work out well, we'll be able to add another 80 units to this 8.6 acres. So that's 80 more units that are affordable for people to live in. So we'll see what that looks like in the future. I was looking at A5, and I'm glad for that. I'm looking at A6. Congratulations to all those that got promoted, you know? And A7, my favorite, when Marshall brings the monthly bills to us to look at. And I really want to thank all the businesses and all the residents that contribute to making it possible to pay this bill, because it's not little. It's $12 million, okay, for November. So everybody that works together, that lives together in Moreno Valley, makes this happen. This is where the city is recognized for being financially responsible. And that's a beautiful thing to know, you know, that we're not wasting our money. It's hard to hear the last speaker talk about how evil we are, just, you know, that was pretty tough. And I would have loved to have him explain that to us, you know? But that's another time for that one. And I also want to thank the fire chief for, hopefully he'll get approved with his 42 million, 42 million, I wish it was that kind of money, but $42,000. That would do a lot for him, and his emergency activities. But I'm happy for that and the staff that worked that out for him to get that kind of money, and hopefully gets approved tonight. And I looked at A10. I didn't know that we do 100% of the lighting and then the state does the repairs. And then C4. Again, I hope it works out in the end, that we'll have another 80 units for people to live in that's affordable. Thank you tonight.
Thank you, Rafael. I'll go ahead and entertain a motion.
Okay, motion to approve the consent calendar as presented?
Motion by Mayor Protembaka, second by Councilmember Marquez. Okay, please vote. Okay, and it's approved unanimously. We'll go straight to reports. We'll start off with, if you have a report, Riverside County Transportation Commission, Mayor Protembaka?
Thank you. RCTC purchased CommuterLink Express Route 200 buses as part of the 91 Express Lanes Project. Route 200 buses use express lanes to provide highly reliable commute trips, as well as connections to MetroLink, Disneyland, and other popular destinations. Passengers can ride for $3 or less each way. Visit riversitetransit.com for more details. I'll continue with our report from the Western Riverside Council of Governments, or WRCOG as it's known. The TUMF Program Activities Report included the update on the TUMF calculation and collection process to allow an option for member agencies to shift the responsibility for TUMF calculation and collection to WRCOG. That was approved last October 2018. The option to delegate TUMF calculation and collection to WRCOG will only become effective for a member agency with the action by the elected body of the agency to approve the TUMF ordinance amendment. The item is scheduled for the February 19th, following the City Council hearing. The League of California Cities provided summaries of Governor Newsom's housing-related budget proposals. League staff noted a significant concern on the governor's proposal to take away transportation funding from cities that failed to meet state housing goals. And that concludes my reports.
Thank you. And we also have a report from Councilmember Marquez.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. RCA Board Directors met February 4th. Moreno Valley has contributed or has collected fees for the MSHCP, which is Multiple Species Habitat Conservation Plan. In November of 2018, Moreno Valley collected $27,000. That came from 13 residence permits. In December of 2018, the city collected 42,000. That came from 20 residential permits. This is an organization that does a lot of your species throughout the county. This has to do with not only species of like birds, snakes, it also has something to do with plants, trees. So I'm glad to see that the city, the building we're building, that money goes to this organization, which is really nice. Mayor, one real quick I'd like to bring up on the RTA. On the RTA, we were informed that the city of Moreno Valley Route 19, which is the main route in the city, ridership has gone up tremendously. It's unbelievable that we're getting, we're getting residents out of their cars and putting them on the bus, because it's really showing. And then if these other routes could just get up there, meaning Ironwood, Heacock, Alisandro, those routes, let's get out of our cars and let's get on these buses and show the rest of the county that Moreno Valley is helping there too. So that's, that's it. Thank you.
Great. All right, we have city managers' report.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Protem, members of the council. I am delighted tonight to announce that the city of Moreno Valley was just named as a top employer by Inland Empire Magazine. We're obviously pleased, as this recognizes what I believe to be one of the keys to our success in meeting the needs of our community. We remain extremely successful in hiring and retaining the best and the brightest to join our public service team. And if I could ask, gentlemen, isn't that beautiful? I can attest that my colleagues here at the city of Moreno Valley are the most innovative, committed professionals with whom I've ever worked, and the positive environment here is what keeps them here and inspires their continued success. I'd like to thank the City Council for your support, all of you, in fostering an environment where our employees can thrive and are recognized for their outstanding work in service to residents and businesses throughout our community. I know that each of you take the time to say thank you to our staff, and I can't tell you how far that goes to create this environment where everyone can excel. And I'd like to thank my colleagues at all levels throughout our organization. We're a top employer because we have top employees. And that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you so much, city manager. We have city attorneys' report.
Thank you. Very briefly, thank you, Mayor. Mayor Protem, councilmembers. Just want to report, Mayor Protem, Councilmember Thornton, City Manager and myself attended the League of California City New Councilmember Conference. It was a very good conference, good program, good opportunity for team building and for meeting some of the new elected officials throughout the state. It was a very well-attended and very useful program. Thank you.
Thank you, city attorney. Okay, we'll move on to our closing comments. We have Councilmember Thornton.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to congratulate the city staff and all the employees on that award that says a lot about your organization. I, this month, I've learned a lot more, and I'm looking forward to engaging with the city staff and the City Council and its constituents throughout the Moreno Valley. Some things that I've done is I attended a homeless coordinating and financial council meeting that was held in Sacramento. This council meeting is headed by department heads from housing, social services, healthcare services, basically every California department head to deal with the issue that is impacting the entire state, which is homelessness. And then I, along with the Mayor Protem and Councilmember Cabrera, all attended the recent Homeless Point in Time Count that was organized by Riverside County. That was on January 29th. And just really going out in the field and connecting directly with the individuals who do not have a home like we do, a traditional home like we do here in our city, and hearing directly from them on the issues that they're experiencing. And I, it's something I did last year, and it's volunteer-driven, so I really encourage every single person that has homelessness as an issue that they talk about to go out and do that point-in-time count. And then also, as our city attorney mentioned, we attended the conference, this recent conference. It was for newly, it's basically professional development for newly city council members. So I really appreciate the opportunity to attend it, and we attended training such as ethics and sexual harassment prevention. So it was very beneficial to attend that, and I thank the Mayor Protem for attending it along with me, and just that continuous commitment of our City Council, the members, to engage in professional development, right? Because this is something that we need to continue in. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Thornton, we have Councilmember Marquez.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Well, I want to say it's good to be back. I've been gone for a while. A lot of people don't know that I was hospitalized there for a while. I'm back to 100%. I wanted to reach out to District 3 residents that I apologize for not going out when you're requesting to meet with me. Unfortunately, I was ill. I couldn't do it, but I'm catching up on all those requests. So I want to say just, you know, bear with me. I will be out there to visit you one-on-one as the days come. Secondly, I want to say, and I haven't had this chance to say it this year, for last year, staff, you guys are just great, what you guys do. You just don't know how appreciative I am, what you guys have done, and I'm glad to be part of this. There's a lot of residents out there that are saying that the staff, you know, is doing a good job, and I have to agree. You guys have, not only you guys, staff-wise, but all the city employees. I saw one city employee driving down the street. There was a shopping cart full of trash, and somebody had knocked it over. And this employee drove by, and he pulled over, and he actually got out and picked it up, cleaned it up, put the shopping cart in back of his truck along with the trash, and drove off. I mean, that, to me, that says, that's somebody who cares. And I just want to say to staff and city employees, thank you. Thank you very much. On a good, good note is that I just returned from Atlanta, and you know me, when it comes to sports, I like to brag, and I think I am bragging a little bit, but I attended the Super Bowl, and it was an experience. I attended the Super Bowl and it was an experience. If you people or you residents out there want to experience something like that, in twenty twenty-two, the Super Bowl will be here in Los Angeles at the new stadium. But I just want to say, what an experience. And I tell everybody else out there, do it, go out and, and do it. But wait till the Rams for next year. And, and last thing is, I want to recognize some, some, some very important people here, and I don't know if the mayor was going to do it before the evening's up, but I, I want to, to introduce, and would you please stand up supervisors, Jeff Wyatt's office? Do you guys stand up, please, and, and there you go, and go ahead and, and can you go ahead and announce your, your names and your position, please? And these are the guys that we have to complain to and keep them on their toes for the next four years. So I just wanted to bring that up to, to that, so again, thank you very much, thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Cabrera?
Thank you, Mayor. And for me as well, it's been some time, I feel like it's been years, but it's been some time since I was here. I think this is my first meeting since the end of last year. And it's really good to be back here again, to get back to business, making things happen, seeing the new things that are coming about, and seeing a lot of familiar faces as well. And I also want to just recognize a few people in, in the audience here tonight as well. My mother is actually here tonight visiting from Texas. It's a rare occasion. It's really good to have her here, and also, right behind her, we have the Southwest Regional Carpenters here as well. So I want to recognize them also. And I'll try to make this short. I also attended the point in time count with Councilmember Thornton and Mayor Protembaka and Marshall Ironman as well. I'm just glad we had the opportunity for the second time now for me to go out there and, and experience that. And I, I mean, there was a difference, there was a difference from last year. I think last year, we definitely saw a lot more homeless folks out on the street and the fields, and maybe that's for different reasons, but, but I think at the end of the day, that's a good thing, that there's less people that we see out sleeping, sleeping outdoors. So we just need to continue working on that, trying to see how we can keep helping everyone who's out there who needs the help, because in our conversations, they're really nice people, they're kind people, they have no problem talking to you. We just need to keep that, being persistent and stay consistent, offering help and extending that hand and building those relationships with them and being friendly to them so that they can, they can little by little, you know, accept all the help that's out there. And on another note as well, we, we spoke with the deputies who went out there and escorted us to the different locations. And one of the things that we talked about was the panhandlers, or anyone who's out panhandling, and how that's an issue when it comes to anyone who's driving and giving cash to panhandlers, it becomes an issue. Because a lot of, a lot of these people with the cash, they go and buy things like drugs. So I think it's something that we can all work on, there's nothing wrong with helping, but, for example, you know, giving them water, like water bottles, or buying them a meal instead of giving them cash, because that just empowers them to continue their bad habits, like buying drugs and cigarettes and all of that. So I just wanted to put that out there as well. Also, I attended the BIA Economic Outlook. I want to thank Tom Jarrell for reminding me about that. It was a really nice event. We were looking at the economic forecast for the next year or so, looking at statistics and comparing the inland empire to the state and the entire county. And we're doing very, very well compared to the state and the county, the entire country. We're outpacing both economically, creating way more jobs. And so that's something that we need to keep going, we need to keep doing all of that. This team, you guys are doing all the hard work, and so I'm grateful to be a part of this as well, to have joined this organization. And we get to learn from all of you and sit across the table from you in meetings and learn from you as well. So I'm glad that we're able to help each other out. And lastly, I just want to talk about the jobs, is another thing that they mentioned, how we're creating tons of jobs. And something that I think we should focus on, because we have brought, what is it, fourteen thousand jobs in the past four or five years or so? Seventeen thousand jobs, seventeen thousand jobs, but I, I think we can focus more on the higher wage jobs as we move forward. Things like the tech industry and the medical industry. We already have two hospitals here, we're building a lot of medical offices, nursing facilities, things of that nature. So we, we can keep building on that and training our, our youth here, training our residents with those certificates and degrees so that they can stay here, so that they don't have to go to areas like Houston or up north. They can stay here, make very good wages, and we can attract the employers here. So I think that's something that we can work on. And at Moreno Valley College, we actually have the cybersecurity program. And at the end of this month, we're going to have the California Mayor's Cup right here at Moreno Valley College. If anyone wants to attend that, our mayor will be there as well to present and actually accept an award on behalf of the city. So it's a lot of exciting things that are happening, a lot of things that we're working on, and I think I've talked enough for tonight, so everyone have a good night and stay warm out there.
Thank you, Mayor Protembaka.
Well, that's what happens when you speak towards the end, everyone covers everything. So I just wanted to mention that I did attend the League of California Cities Workshop Conference for newly-elected council members, and we attended, the city clerk, Pat, and our city attorney and our city manager, we attended with Carla to support her and guide her and let her know that she has all the support she needs in us. So I just want to say thank you for the opportunity to work with you, and just want to congratulate her again for her position on the city council. You're doing a good job. And it's very wet out there, please, everyone, drive carefully, drive slowly. It's better to get somewhere late than not get there at all. There's been a lot of accidents, and we need the rain. Just be careful, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protembaka. And for mine, I just wanted to, again, just reiterate our, you know, we're very thankful to the businesses that participated in the Business Spotlight, especially Amaya Real Estate Group. Remember to shop locally, support them. Also, the employee of the third quarter, want to congratulate her as well. Family is all that matters, and the Community Day of Service members as well that helped really to make that event a success. I want to also thank our carpenters as well, you came at the last meeting as well, so let's give them another round of applause. You've been lately coming out and just showing your support, so we really do appreciate that. I also want to congratulate our city staff as well for, as a, as an institution, just getting that award, you know, as a top employer. I think that means a lot, and I, I know that there's a lot of people that, that want to work in the city, and it's because of that, because of the great work that you all do. So I want to thank you for that. I do want to emphasize to any folks and also to my, my colleagues as well, we do have a lot of vacancies on the boards and commissions, especially many that are coming up. So if you know of any folks that maybe you recommend from your district, you know, please let me know or let the city clerk's office know so that we can get them appointed, because we do have several in the parks, trails, and rec. Also, the planning is going to be coming up, and the traffic safety and the environmental. So there's actually several boards where we do need to fill those vacancies. I, about a couple weeks ago, I welcomed the business community, and it was a really amazing event. I want to thank Mike Lee. We had probably maybe six hundred folks, or maybe more, from the business community, developers, business, large companies that were there, commercial development companies. And it was really an honor to, to welcome them to our city and to really let them know that we're business-friendly, we mean business, and we want to make sure that we can bring all that business into Moreno Valley. So I think I was able to make a few contacts there, and I know Mike was as well, and so hopefully we can bring more of that growth, because when we have the business that comes to Moreno Valley, we have the jobs and we have more revenue. So it just helps in general. About last week, Black Bear Diner, has anyone eaten there yet at Black Bear Diner? Amazing food, amazing food, keep eating there, it's great food. And I got, I think I've gone there like six times already, a lot. And so I got to recognize them at their grand opening, and so I'm hoping that, you know, many more years to come, you know, in the city of Moreno Valley. Last week, actually about a week and a half ago, we recognized our volunteers, actually for the first time in the city. We had a volunteer appreciation ceremony for our boards and commissioners, and it was really a nice event. I got to speak to a lot of people, and they were very happy that we were recognizing them as a city for the time that, that they give to our community, I mean, free, they're volunteers. So that was really, really nice, and I want to thank the city manager and city attorney for, for attending that as well. Tomorrow, I do have a telephone town hall scheduled at six PM, and it will be citywide. So if you have any concerns or needs, please feel free to participate in the telephone town hall. I'll be providing updates on the skate park, which there's construction going on right now. And so I know a lot of the kids are very happy about that, the amphitheater, job growth, and just really listening to your needs and wants and seeing how we can come together, okay, to address those. So again, I want to thank everyone for being here tonight, and we'll go ahead and adjourn this meeting at six forty-six PM.